Madam Secretary, for the record, all council members are here with the exception of Ms. Scott, so we have a quorum of six. And for the record, a affirmative vote is still four with six members. Now open the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, I like to welcome our citizens who come to these meetings tonight to be involved in our city government. And at the appropriate time, you're welcome to come forward and speak to any matter that's of concern to you. And with that, I'm going to move on into announcements. I would like to announce tonight that it is Colby's last council meeting with us, our Director of Parks and Recreation, and I want to extend the thanks of this body to him for the great work that he's done for the city for the last, I believe, six years. And so, Colby, are you there? Would you like to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I do want to personally thank you for all the support that you've given me over the years. The department's come a long ways, and I'm very excited that my family and I are going to be staying in town to be able to see it continue to grow. You have a great group of staff in the Parks Department, and I would like to thank city management and all the other directors for all the support they've given me over the last few years. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Moving along, I don't think we have any public or employee recognitions tonight, so we'll move on to items from council. Are there any items from council tonight?
I have one. I was at a meeting for the Southside Coalition yesterday, and one of the ladies brought up a question on our code on the number of dogs that are allowed in the city limits. Apparently, we don't have a limit, and I would like for us to look at that ordinance and see if maybe we could visit that and discuss it and see what we can do. For another meeting, not tonight.
All right. Any other items from council? Seeing none, we will move into citizens' communication. Any citizen that has anything to bring before council tonight, you're welcome to step forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
There are three items on the consent agenda that will be approved by a single vote today. They are, first, the adoption of minutes of the regular meeting on January 21st, 2020; second, a minimum lot width for rural subdivision variance requests for A and R Madera subdivision located on US Highway 59; and third, the approval of, the annual approval of investment policy and list of qualified brokers.
I move adopt the consent agenda.
Second. Mr. Delagarsa did. Oh, I'm sorry, I did not hear. It's been a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. We'll now move into the action items for council, and I would like to move item three, E3, forward to allow the presenters to get out of here a little sooner.
Sure. Item E3 is support for VTX Enchanted Gardens Limited, a development of an affordable multifamily dwelling on North Ben Jordan Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Real Tax Development Corporation intends to submit an application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for a 2020 cumulative 9% housing tax credit for the Enchanted Gardens. Tonight, we have Mr. Rick Deo here with the Enchanted Gardens, and he's going to give us a little background on the proposed project and the application, and they are requesting a resolution of support for this.
Thank you, members of the council, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak before you. My name is Rick Deo. I'm the President of Real Tax Development Corporation. By the way, I had laryngitis, so I apologize for my voice. But anyway, I've started Real Tax Development Corporation in 1998, so we're a 22-year-old company. We've been doing affordable housing as well as high-end luxury market-rate housing since we started in 1998. I wanted to give you a little background on our company. We've done just about every type of affordable development and just about every type of market-rate development as well. What we're proposing here actually is, while it's an affordable development, we will also have market-rate units as well, so it's a, every senior citizen can afford to live in this development. A little bit of background on some of the properties that we've done, you can see from the monitors, this is a market-rate development that we've done in Corpus Christi. It overlooks Corpus Christi Bay. It's called the Cosmopolitan. And the reason I show these, you'll see the market-rate developments and the affordable developments that we've done, some of them that we've done over the past, and you'll see really that there's no distinction between the two. You can't tell the difference between the two. Our affordable developments are just, is nice and well-equipped with amenities as our market-rate developments. Here's a project that we built in Austin in 2016. Here's an affordable project that we built in Austin and finished it in 2016. Here's an affordable development in Houston. Here's an affordable seniors' development in St. Petersburg, Florida, that we completed. Once again, here's an affordable development in Elgin, Texas. And so, I think what you're seeing is that there's really no distinction in the quality of what you're getting between affordable developments and the market rate. This right here is a seniors' development that we did in Beaumont, Texas. Once again, this is a family and seniors' development in Houston. The tax credit program, for those of you that don't know, is a very competitive program. The oversubscription in many of the regions can be upwards of 10 to 1, and in some regions such as Houston and Dallas and San Antonio, could be upwards of 15 to 20 to 1. I've put on the board here the amount of applications that have been submitted for this region. And as you'll see, we are the only one in Victoria. All the other applications are in Corpus Christi. And you can see that they're all scoring within one or two points from the top. And so, it's a very competitive process. The start of the process is what we're asking for today, and that is a resolution of support. Without a resolution of support, you have to withdraw your application because it's not going to score enough points to get funded. As I mentioned, the application that we're proposing is a senior housing development that is going to be 96 units. As you can see from the board, we have various units at various price points. Every senior, as I mentioned, any senior citizen in Victoria can qualify to live in this development. We have market-rate units, we have units at 30% of median income, 50% and 60% of median income. But as you'll see, the rent structure ranges from $289 for a one-bedroom, up to $800 for a one-bedroom. And then, for a two-bedroom, I can't read that up there, it goes from $351 up to $950. These right here show some of the amenities that we will offer at the property. The property, as I mentioned, will be no different than any luxury development that you'll find anywhere in Victoria. It will have granite countertops, it will have, be a gated community, it will have every option, every high-end amenity that you will find in the, you know, the clubhouse will have a resort-style pool, it will have business center or weight room facility, all the amenities that you would typically find in a high-end luxury development. The other thing to mention is that all of these amenities will be offered, like I said, at the affordable rates. The property location is a property that's actually owned by the city, and it's 10 acres located on Ben Jordan Boulevard. Also on this slide, you can see there's just some additional pictures of some developments, of a development that we've, that we did that was an affordable development in Houston. The next pictures that I've got up here, this is an affordable development that we built in Pascagoula, Mississippi, and it's been one of our most successful senior developments that we've built. To mention, one thing I wanted to make sure that I do mention is that this is for independent living seniors. It's not assisted care, it's not assisted living. It's for those senior citizens that are independent and want to live in housing with those that are 55 or older. This type of development that you see, the pictures up here, is something that's very similar to what we are proposing, and that is a one-story product where every unit has its own front porch, its own entrance, and there's generally eight units per building. It's all, one story only. Here's a picture of the clubhouse and the project in Pascagoula, Mississippi, when it was just being finished, but you can see that there's nice front porches for every entrance of every unit, and as I mentioned, we've got a nice clubhouse. We also, on our senior facilities, we'll put in a garden. In this particular project here, we put in two gardens because it was 120 units. The senior citizens seem to like to be in the garden, and us in the garden. We also, as I mentioned, have a resort-style pool, or will have a resort-style pool. Here's an example of that at this particular development. This particular development this year, that we had in Pascagoula, as I mentioned, it's 120 units, and it was built on 12 acres. It's about 10 units to the acre based on the one-story product. Here in Victoria, we're proposing 96 units on 10 acres, so we're at 9.6 units to the acre, or a very similar density as to what we were doing on the property in Mississippi. Once again, this just kind of shows you the, a little bit about the property. As I mentioned, we need a resolution of support from the city council, and that is really just to get the process started. Once we get, have a resolution of support, we'll score points for that resolution of support, and without those points, as I mentioned, we won't score high enough to get funded. With that letter of support, we are hoping to be able to outscore some of the deals in Corpus Christi. We've been doing this a long time here in Texas. I've been doing it for over 30 years. As I was mentioning to the city manager earlier, I got an email yesterday from a girl that's one of the consultants that does tax credit applications for those developers that are from out of the state, and she sent me an email wanting to know if we were moving forward with our Victoria project. And so, one of the things, I guess, that I think, I take that as a good sign because we've been very successful over the past years in winning allocations, and we think that if we're close to the top, that we may scare off some of the competition and perhaps we can win the project for Victoria. One of the things I don't have in the slide, but I do want to make note of, is I had my staff pull this today, the deals that have been done in Victoria over the years, the affordable deals that have been done over the years, and the last deal that was done in Victoria that was, that was an affordable development utilizing tax credits was done in 2007. So it's been 13 years since there's been an application, been an allocation of credits to the city of Victoria. Instead, every year thereafter, it's all gone to Corpus Christi. And some of you may have some questions as to why Corpus, there's some things that Corpus has done that has allowed them to score a little more points, but we feel comfortable that we, that we will be scoring as well as the applications in Corpus Christi, and we would look forward to a positive vote for a resolution of support. Somebody got any questions?
On that list...
Or if you have questions for staff, we'd be happy to also answer.
On that list that you had up there of other, you know, how we scored against other developments? Yes, sir, that one?
Yep.
Right there. Are any of those your developments?
No.
Just Victoria?
Yeah, just the one in Victoria.
Okay.
By the way, just a little more background on myself. Like I said, I'm from Texas, born and raised. Our main office is in Austin, Texas, and I also actually have a house down in Corpus. But, you know, our name is, you'll see the various developers where it says primary contact, that's generally where the primary developer is. We don't, we do have a deal in Rockport that we are submitting for an allocation of tax credits on, and we are the winning bid on that deal in Rockport, but that's a different set aside, it's a different region than here. It's the same region, but it's a different pool of funds. There's an urban pool, and then there's a rural pool. And we fall here in Victoria in the urban pool. The only two cities that fall there are Victoria and Corpus. And then, of course, in the rural, we're actually going, our Rockport property is paired against a deal in Bishop, Texas.
Thank you. I move to approve item E1.
Second.
It's E3.
E3, I'm sorry. I amend it to E3.
We have a motion and a second on item E3. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're going to try to do all we can to see that you land that development.
Yeah, hopefully, I'll come back here and we'll have some positive news for everybody.
Thank you very much.
And just for expectations, so we'll probably know by summertime, correct?
Yes, the applications are actually, the applications are due into the state on the 28th of this month, and then the state will take about three months to do their underwriting of all of the applications, and then they'll put together a list of those that are in the scoring range, and then they'll, the scores that you saw that I posted earlier, those are pre-scores. Those are self-scores by the applicants, and the state may throw out points on some of those, and they may add points on others, but we should know by May, I would say May or June, whenever the state's points come out. They make the awards in July.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Guss, should we resume with item E1, please?
Sounds good. Item E1 is the contract with Library Interiors of Texas for Victoria Public Library reflooring project in the amount of $215,041.55.
Move to accept item E1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we want to see the report before the vote?
Yes.
Would you go ahead?
All right. Good evening, council. Tonight, I'm presenting an overview of the flooring replacement project at Victoria Public Library. And I wanted to give you a little bit of history of the flooring that's currently in the building. The current carpet was installed in 2008. We are a high-use building. We have about 16,000 visitors to our building in a month, or about 550 people walk over that flooring a day. We, well, our practice for upkeeping that carpet since 2008, when it was installed, is to have a cleaning professionally done twice a year, and then spot clean in high-traffic areas as needed. We've also replaced tiles that were stained as we had the opportunity to do so. In 2011, three years after the carpet was replaced, or replaced in 2008, we had to replace the lobby and the carpet done to the restroom because it was so badly stained from traffic. And so, that also was a major addition to this project early on after it was installed. So the contract that you've been presented with tonight, it includes the following scope of work. We have a removal and disposal of our existing flooring. They are also going to be moving all the shelving, the materials, and the furniture as needed, installing an industrial-grade carpet to the main public floor and three small offices, and rubber flooring in our lobby, our restroom hallway, our children's storytime room, and a reading room. Then after they complete that installation, all the shelves, the materials, and the furniture are going to be moved back to locations that are going to be determined by a mutually agreed-upon floor plan that the contractor is developing and that we are reviewing. This project covers about 30,000 square feet of space, and I've also given you an example of the new carpet and the new rubber flooring. The color on that carpet is a dark navy with gray-black variations throughout it. The rubber flooring is a lighter color. We chose a darker color on this carpet to hide those traffic patterns and the staining. And the rubber flooring is something that is more easy to clean. It doesn't absorb spills, and I've spoken with also a couple of libraries that have used it in the libraries and really, really like it. This slide shows you where the proposed location is in our building of the new flooring. The blue on the floor plan is carpet. The light gray and the dark gray circles are rubber flooring. So our goals with this project are, we want to first improve the appearance of our building, we want to improve the ease of cleaning the high-traffic areas in the building, and we want to continue to maintain that absorption of noise. The budget for this project came in from a Choice Partners quote. Choice Partners is a cooperative government purchasing agency, and it is at $215,041.55. The approved budget for the project was $180,000, so we have an outstanding balance of $35,041.55. We received a generous gift from the Friends of Victoria Public Library to cover the $35,000, and we'll recover, we'll cover the remainder with the library capital line item. So once we approve the contract tonight, and we give contract, the contractor notice to proceed tomorrow or as soon as possible, the contractor, Library Interiors, has confirmed that they are going to move ahead and order the materials immediately. The carpet is one that is milled or made after an order is placed, so it is a special product. They don't have it sitting on the shelf. It's not off the shelf. So the materials then are made at the factory and shipped, and it takes between three to five weeks. So our construction is set to begin on March 30th, but it could happen earlier if we do get those materials in, shipped in faster. Library Interiors said that they would consider starting the project earlier if we get everything in place. Then we've got a construction complete date of May 1st, so that's our target with a project walkthrough on May 11th and a closeout by May 19th to get us all ready to go for summer. So during the construction, we are looking at all avenues that we can of continuing to offer library services. So I gave you a slide here to show you what is going on at this point. So we are going to continue to check out and return materials in the building as much as possible, and we will have all of our book drops open. We will set up a small reading space in our Bronte Room, along with a small browsing collection, and some of our most popular materials will be available in that room because the Bronte Room is not being re-carpeted. It was re-carpeted after Hurricane Harvey. We will also have our Wi-Fi available, and we're going to have laptops and iPads that can be checked out to use in the building. On our website, we'll have eBooks and digital materials available, and those are fully accessible to Victoria County library cardholders. We'll still be holding all of our library programs, but they're going to be at alternate locations, and we're working out the details on that. We're going to be announcing all of those through our website, our Facebook page, and our newsletter. And then our users can still request items by calling in or emailing or stopping by the library. The only thing that could be a temporary delay or suspension of service is when we have all these materials kind of on alternate shelving, mobile shelving in the building, and there's construction going on, staff members will have to go in to retrieve. So we may have a 24 to 48-hour delay in getting some items. And then our desktop computers at this point are not going to be accessible. It's going to be all through Wi-Fi for internet access. So the library staff and I are very excited about the project. We're looking forward to these improvements, and we are also really looking forward for ways to continue to provide service to our community, and wanted to know if there are any other questions that I can answer about the project.
Dana, what's the life expectancy of the carpet and the rubber flooring?
So the contractor has said that a high-quality industrial carpet should last 15 years. Ours, from 2008, has been about 12 to 13, approximately 12 years, and I'm hoping with this darker color that we're going to have a lot better use, and the traffic pattern won't show as it did on the lighter carpet that we had.
Are these sheet goods or roll goods, do you know?
These are tile, the larger-sized tiles. I don't remember the dimensions. And then the rubber flooring actually, I think, is in rolls.
Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign.
Item E2 is a master distribution services agreement and two task order contracts with Power Secure Incorporated for backup generation services at the Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant and Water Pump Station Number Three in an annual amount of $121,500.
Hello, Mayor, members of the council. This is a project to execute a master services agreement and two task orders for the generators at the Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant located on US 59 by the Guadalupe River and water treatment, the water pumping station plant located at Airline and Ben Jordan. With us today is Bill Starnes with Resolve Energy and Kelly Land with Power Secure. Resolve Energy was, assisted the city in procuring, bidding, and negotiating the contracts with Power Secure, who is the company that will install, design, install, maintain, and operate the generators. I'll go through a little bit of the history of this project, and I went too fast. Okay, back in August, of course, 2017 was Hurricane Harvey. In October, we began discussions for permanent generator systems at the critical facilities in Victoria. October 2017, we determined the critical facilities was the wastewater pumping station, surface water treatment plant, the public works facility, which actually was planned and purchased prior to Hurricane Harvey, Water Plant Three, and the Regional Wastewater Plant. In November of 2017, the generator at the public works facility was, became fully operational. Then in February 2018, we began discussions with FEMA for funding opportunities for the remainder of the generators. 2018, same year, we had the operation... 2018, same year, we had the operation, the generator at the raw water pump station fully operational, which of course was a key one for us. Then in June of 2019, we prepared plans and specifications for the surface water plant generator. Twenty ninth, and then in September of 2019, the generator became operational at the surface water plant. October, that's when we began the contract with Resolve Energy to secure the funding, not to secure, but to begin the funding options for the regional plant and the water plant, the water pumping station at Plant Three. In November of 2019, we began negotiations with Power Secure for the lease option for the regional plant and the wastewater, and the water plant three. January of 2020, Power Secure agreement to city council. And then the proposed completion date for both generators is August of 2020. And then same thing with the water plant three. Brief summary of each generator. This is the one located at the Regional Wastewater Plant. It will be installed near the headworks. It's a two-engine diesel generator set, 1,200 kilowatt standby, 1080 runtime, and the lease is a $70,000 per year lease for 20 years. And Water Plant Three, again, located at Ben Jordan and Airline. It's installed, will be installed near the pump station and the motor building. It's a one-engine diesel generator set, 625 standby, 540 kilowatt runtime, and that is $51,500 per year with the 20-year lease. We've had two other companies were involved in the, when we were bidding, when Resolve was looking out to get the bids for this. One company could only run with gas generators, and we have no gas facility or gas ability at the regional plant. And the other company was, would only provide the generators. They didn't do the design or the installation. So we negotiated with Power Secure. And that completes it. If y'all have any questions?
I noticed that the completion date is in August, which is right in the real middle of the hurricane season. We do have contracts in place for units to come in, temporary units, do we not?
Yes, sir. Ashbrit, we have contracted with Ashbrit, which is part of what Darrell Leesack does. And yes, they have those listed for both the regional plant and Water Plant Three.
So we are potentially protected-
Yes, sir.
-at the beginning of the hurricane season.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I move that we accept E2.
Second. Been moved and seconded to accept item E2. Is there any further discussion of council? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. I think we're moving into city manager reports, Mr. Garza.
Yes. April, you going to go first?
Yes.
She's going to provide just an update on some-
Boards.
-appointments.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have a brief update on five members of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and their appointments will expire in March. Just have a brief presentation on the purpose of the board, their terms, the composition, and the upcoming appointments. So the board was established to hear appeals and variance requests concerning rulings by staff related to building, electric, gas, mechanical, plumbing, and energy codes. The board assures fair and equitable application of all the regulations that govern building and construction here in Victoria. Members serve three-year terms, and the board meets on regular intervals or within 10 working days of the notice of an appeal. The composition of the 11-member, the composition of the 11-member board is very specific, requiring an architect, engineer, a residential builder, a commercial builder, master electrician, master plumber, and member of the mechanical trade. The other four positions are held by representatives from each of the four single-member council districts. So the current members are James Wearden, Michael Atkinson, Philip Schrader, Richard Janeca, Lynn Lukemeyer, Lupi Martinez. And then the last five here are the ones whose appointments are going to be up in March, which is Stephen Turek, Bob Alvarez, Roland Rodriguez, Leah Walden, and Patrick Ort. The members who are set to expire in March have expressed a desire to be reappointed, and we have not received any additional applications at this time. So a resolution will be brought before the council at the February 18 meeting to vote on the appointments. And the new appointments will expire in March of 2023. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Mayor, I have a question on this subject for you. Assuming that we don't have any additional applications, it would help us to draft the resolution if we know that council anticipates reappointing the people who are currently serving in those positions. So assuming that we don't have any other applications between now and then, mayor, is it okay if I just go ahead and draft the resolution with those names in there? It can be changed to the night of the meeting if necessary.
I don't see why not because, you know, you're kind of limited in some of those appointments by the requirements.
That's right.
The statute of requirements.
All right.
Those requirements.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a 20-minute presentation by a fire marshal.
I believe that's 20 seconds.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Tom Legler. I'm the fire marshal. If you don't know, the Victoria Fire Marshal's office is a standalone law enforcement agency separate from the police department. Every year, we're required to report our racial profiling statistics. Because our department does not do traffic stops, we are not required to fill out a report, but we have to submit a report saying that we are exempt. So that's what I'm presenting to you tonight is our exempt report.
Any questions?
We're exempt, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for preparing for that.
Please take us into executive session.
Sure. The city council will recess now for executive session on this the fourth day of February 2020 at 5:37 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code Section 551.087 to discuss or deliberate the offer to a financial or other incentive to a business prospect that the city council seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the city of Victoria and with which the city of Victoria is conducting economic development negotiations. Second is Texas Government Code Section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property interest due to the fact that a deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in negotiations with a third party. And third is an executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney on a matter involving pending or contemplated litigation or other matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, including but not limited to the Redburn litigation.
So as we go into executive session, I don't anticipate there'll be any actions taken. So for all practical purposes, the meeting will end here. And, but Madam Secretary, if you'll sign, pen my signatures to all of the past resolutions in minutes tonight, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.